This is an extremely difficult second in this story.
No, no, I was gonna give off of there, but I forgot that all my other money is gone. I only have hundreds.
Hey, Robert, how are you?
I'm doing alright.
Are your arms clearing now?
Yeah, they're still good up here, man.
Yeah, she's got the doctor.
Yeah.
Good morning! Um, if you're joining us online and you had no sound to begin with, um, that is because we were trying to fix the mics and why they're not giving sound on this segment, so... We are in Acts, chapter three. So... Luke begins Acts, Ascension, um, there's Pentecost. The church is, is living, worshiping together, taking care of one another. All that stuff's going on. Um, everything's going swimmingly now. There's still people that hear the word of God and reject it, but there's still not conflict yet or persecution yet. This turns in Acts, chapter three. Acts, chapter three is where, um, there starts to be friction between, um, what would be known as Christians eventually, and what would be known as Jews eventually, uh, over the person of Jesus Christ, was he the Messiah or not? And so, in Acts, chapter three, Peter and John are going to the temple. There's this gentleman there who is, uh, begging, he gives alms because he can't walk, or he's begging for alms because he can't walk and he can't go into the temple. Right? Because he's lame, which means that he has a physical deformity of some kind or an illness which would prevent him from going into the temple because it's not ritually clean, uh, according to the Levitical law. And Peter looks at him and says, "I don't have, um, gold and silver to give you, but I do give you what I have, and that is, in the name of Jesus of Nazareth, rise up and walk." Man stands up, the crowd comes over, right? Because they're kind of amazed by what is going on here. Man's able to go into the temple. Right? Uh, we picked this up, the man's able to go into the temple. By, uh, this miracle is also, it does two things. One, it physically restores the man, but the underlying thing is that now that he's able to walk, and now he's been given something in the name of Jesus Christ of Nazareth, his sins are forgiven. His sins were forgiven in Jesus Christ of Nazareth. And this is kind of where some people come over, they wanna, they wanna try to know what's going on. Uh, speaks on Solomon's Orkut, and he starts, or I say sermon, Peter starts to speak on Solomon's Oracle, and, um, starts to give a sermon, if you will, or speech. And he's laying out who Jesus is, that they deny the Holy and Righteous One, um, and ask for a murderer to be granted to you, that they kill the author of life whom God raised from the dead. Right? And so, he immediately goes, uh, "You rejected him, you killed him, you asked for a murderer, or you asked for murderer, you killed him. You killed the author of life, but God raised him from the dead." He immediately brings in the resurrection. Right? Um...
Test, test, test.
Resurrection is a concept that you're gonna be familiar with in the sense of the resurrection, not necessarily Jesus' resurrection. Now, there's probably a whole, uh, some talk going on about Jesus' resurrection, because again, this is post-Pentecost. Um, and so, this is the first time that the Christ crucified has been preached, or Christ risen from the dead. Uh, but he immediately goes to Easter, um, and that is where we stopped last week. So, this is halfway through verse fifteen. "To this we are witnesses, and his name, by faith in his name, has made this man strong whom you see and know, and the faith that is through Jesus has given the man this perfect health in the presence of you all." And so, they are martyrs. Martyrs, they are witnesses.
Testing, blah, blah, blah.
We get the word martyr from the Greek word witness, and we get that because Christians would witness about the resurrection of Jesus Christ even in the face of persecution. In fact, it was so bad at one point that the bishops of the church had to write orders forbidding people trying to seek, um, martyrdom. Christians were, um, they were, they were so enthusiastic, um, that, that they wanted to be tried in front of Caesar and thrown to the lions. Right? And the bishops in the church says, "No, no, 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 like, like, if that happens, yes, your soul is safe, you are okay, but you shouldn't seek martyrdom. Like, that's, that's not how it goes. Like, it's something that happens to you, it's not something you necessarily seek out." Because the worst of things really happen. You know, one thing that a lot of modern Christianity has lost is this idea of suffering. You go back and you read even through the eighteen hundreds, the idea of suffering is, is everywhere. And the reason why it's there is, in, in, you can kind of see when it starts to drop off, is when the infant mortality rate starts to nose down. Right? Um, when, when people aren't losing forty-seven percent of their children. Um, I mean, that, that, that's a staggering number, but it was forty-seven percent for centuries, right? Um, or when you didn't just get sick and die because maybe you got infected, a cut, or something like that. Um, when women weren't dying as often in childbirth, things like that. So, in other words, when we were less surrounded with death, we kind of lost touch with this idea of, of suffering. But suffering is, is assumed because, or should be assumed in life, because the wages of sin is death. And all forms of suffering is a shadow of death. Illness, actual death, cancer, Alzheimer, um, all of that, uh, the cold, the flu. It's all a shadow, a type and part of, of death. And so, um, the church was like, "Listen, you're gonna suffer. You're gonna either suffer, you know, even if you live in a Christian nation, you're, you're gonna suffer because life is hard. Or if you live in a non-Christian nation, you're gonna suffer because there will be times of persecution. But that doesn't mean that you put up a giant red flag and say, 'Pick me,' right? Right?
Is that just because people want meaning in their life and they want it to mean something even if it's their death?
Um... You'll have to ask them when you get to heaven. You know, there's probably a lot of reasons. Um, you know, one, one thing that we talked about, and, and we've talked about before, is that in Christianity, there's a, a, if you look at the Roman world, if you look at the ancient world, um, why there is some philosophy and things like that that we import into quote-unquote "Western civilization." Western civilization is built off of Christianity. The concept that, um, all are made in the image of God, so have inherent self-worth, um, that we take care of the sick, we take care of the poor, that, um, even in the very modern sense, and, and this is, I mean, Christianity is how we get United States of America. And what I mean by this is sitting there saying is, is that nobody's born a king and nobody's born a slave, right? We're, we're all endowed by our Creator. Um, that, that's Enlightenment Christianity. Um, but this, this radical reorganizing of society and value and worth, and that, um, even slaves were just as important as the emperor, um, all kind of plays into that. It's, it's why Christianity is a threat to the Roman Empire, because when Christianity becomes an official religion, then becomes the official religion, Roman society would not be recognizable from just a hundred years before, when, um, those, you know, Plato writes that some people are born to be slaves, Aristotle writes that women are fairly human, right? Um, that's the idea of the, of the ancient Roman world until Christianity comes along and says, "Actually, no, that's, that's not true at all." So, there's probably a lot of different things that play into that. And then this idea, if you live in a, a world that is literally surrounded by death, right? The, the reason why the average lifespan was thirty years old in the ancient world, through the medieval world, up until, you know, the eighteen, or, yeah, eighteen fifties, eighteen nineties really, is because the infant mortality rate is so high. If you drop out the infant mortality rate, the average age goes back, goes up to the late fifties, mid-sixties, you know, kind of more normal towards what we would think about.
If you lived past age five, the average age was about sixty-five.
Yeah.
I mean, it was fairly normal to what we're at, it was the infant mortality rate.
There's a reason why sixty-five was the original social security, by the way, because it wasn't expected that most people had lived that long. Um, just FYI, when, when they built it. Um, they, social security was built for the ten percent of people who lived past sixty-five. Just to not be depressing this morning. So, so anyway, um, so, so yeah, there's, there's probably just all sorts of things that are wrapped into that, and then just, but this idea of, of, you know, we believe in the resurrection, we believe in eternal life, so it doesn't matter if I'm fed to lions, it doesn't matter if I'm crucified for my faith because in Christ I had the victory. This is temporary, this is momentary, and I will, uh, live again. I, I have one, and then two, and then three, so you guys...
Wasn't it also, though, a, because, because people who were martyred were looked up to because they had, they had great faith? In not just Christianity, but in Muslim world, and in the African world, and everywhere, people who were martyred were...
People who are typically martyred are looked up to.
Yeah, and so, so some of it had to do with...
Oh, there, there, yes, some of it, but I mean, like I said, there's a whole lot of things that were in play going on, and it's impossible to say, you know, why this person or that person...
Well, you and I both have called on people that were homebound or in homes, and, and you've heard it as much as I have, I'm sure. Why doesn't God take them?
Yeah.
They're ready to go, and I think you're seeing the same thing in these people that were, they were ready. Okay, someone will be martyred, I'll go to heaven, praise God. You know, yeah, it's done, I'm out of this veil of tears, I mean, you know...
Yeah, there, I mean, like I said, there's, when we get to heaven, you get to ask them, but there's probably a lot of, a lot of different reasons.
Yeah, who cares?
Yeah.
I don't know, I just, I would think that, I would think that if, eh, as far as the ones that were just like actively, literally seeking martyr, martyr, martyrism, or however you would say it, did make martyr, it, it just seems like if you're going out and you're witnessing for Christ, God is leading and directing your life.
Yeah.
What did you leave, how did you go up to God? And not even worry about that, and continue doing the work after.
Well, so, so what was happening, what was happening when Christianity was an illegal religion in the empire and a death sentence?
Yeah.
Is that Christians were, were going up to Roman centurions, were going up to Roman authorities and saying, "I'm a Christian, kill me," basically.
Right, 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 right.
Right? And, and, and so the bishops are like, "Stop doing that, that's not how this is supposed to, like, no."
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Right? You have these other things you're supposed to be doing as well, you know, your parents, your children, or, or whatever, like, you don't get to just sit there and say, "Well, I'm gonna forget all that and go and, you know..."
Like, what in the fact that you're a Christian, what are you gonna do? It's almost that Martin...
Well, it wasn't, it wasn't what you're gonna do, it was, it was literally like, it, it was literally, it would have been like going, it would have been like flying over to Iraq a few years ago and driving out to ISIS and saying, "Here, I'm a Christian, here's a sword to head me." You know, right? I mean, that's what they were doing, right? And, and that's why the bishops were like, "Stop, that's, that's not how, no, guys, that's, you've missed the point here," right?
In modern parlance, we'd call that suicide by cop.
Yeah.
I mean, it's what they were doing, they were, they were, they were committing suicide but getting somebody else to pull, to draw the sword.
Yes, yes. Yeah. Um, so, so anyway, that is why martyria, and in this case, it's materus because it's, it's masculine plural. Um, but martyria, that's how it goes from this word that literally just means witness, it's a normal Greek word, and gets imported into other languages for martyr, um, because all these people were witnessing about Jesus Christ, and they were martyrs or martyrs. Um, so, we, we are witnesses to this, and what are they witnesses to? They're witnesses that he was the Holy and Righteous One, that the people asked for a murderer, that they killed the author of life, and that God raised the author of life from the dead. So, they are witnesses to the resurrection. So, again, this claim that Jesus becomes God in the early church centuries after the apostles die. Well, here is Acts, written by Luke, who, his sources, Peter and Mary primarily, excuse me, Paul, Paul and Mary, uh, uses them a lot, um, clearly saying, witnesses of the resurrection. This is not a, we don't get to the deification of Jesus several generations after Jesus had died. We don't get, "Well, Jesus was a really good guy, maybe a prophet, oh, we're gonna make this religion off of him." Especially since at that point in history, what was happening to Christians? They're being killed by, for the faith. So, so this idea that they create this religion, and especially that they create this religion to, um, amass wealth and things like that, flies in the face of the first three hundred years of the church. Now, you sit there and say, "Well, three hundred years isn't that long." Our country is not three hundred years old. Alright? I think we have two hundred and fifty coming up next year, right? Seventeen seventy-six, twenty twenty-six, yeah, right? Um, so, and we think that's a long time ago. How many generations ago was that? So, how many generations of Christians being killed is this, I mean, that, this is like, you talk about the long con for something like that to happen. I mean, your parents died, your grandparents died, they're, you know, how far, many generations back do you want to go? And, and so this idea that, that Jesus becomes God in the church after, and, you know, they want to do it to amass wealth or anything else like that, it's just, it defies all reason and logic, quite honestly. And we very clearly see in the word of God that Jesus is proclaimed, that his, um, he's proclaimed as God, and his resurrection is proclaimed from the beginning. "In his name," notice this, "his" and "his name," "and by faith in his name, has made this man strong whom you see and know." Whose faith is it? That makes this man strong? Now, here's something, so, can my faith forgive somebody else's sins? No, it can't, right? Is God operating in the normal means of modus operandi here in Acts, chapter three? No, because if he was, the man wouldn't be walking, a miracle happens. "I give you what I have, I give you what I have, in the name of Jesus Christ of Nazareth, rise and walk." Now, we don't know if this guy knew who Jesus Christ of Nazareth was at all, that's never explained in the text. What is explained is Peter telling him, "In the name of Jesus Christ of Nazareth, rise and walk." So, whose faith made the man well? It, it is Peter's faith, but it's confirming Peter's faith in Jesus to point everybody to Jesus, right? So, the man was made well in the name of Jesus and by faith in Jesus' name. Now, again, this is outside the normal modus operandi, um, of how God normally works, right? Now, what sustains this man from that point on? Well, if I was, his faith, right? Because, "Oh, I was healed in Jesus' name, I'm gonna start believing in this Jesus," right? Okay? Now, I will say this, where do we see something very similar to this?
The, um, uh, the centurion that came to Jesus and says, "Serving is ill, uh, is, is ill."
Yeah.
And that they ended up turning outward, we just, just say the word, they don't know it's, you know...
Yes.
And it happened.
That's true, right? The centurion's faith heals his sermon, right? I was thinking, modern day examples, where do we see this?
Saints.
Well, saints...
I mean, the Catholics are like, you know, they did the thing, we got the miracle, they're the guy, not Jesus, but the guy, the saint. You know, I, I see it that way, but...
Charismatic, thank you.
The, the, um, the answer I'm going for is baptism. Since this child cannot answer on their own, and then the questions are asked to the parents and the sponsors who answer on the child's behalf. Right? Does the child have faith? Yes, but who's answering on behalf of the faith? The parents. Whose faith brought that child to the font?
Parents.
The parents, right? So, um, the forgiveness of sins is given to that child, the child holds on to it through that child's faith, but it's the parents that bring the child to the font, right? "Has made this man strong whom you see and know, and the faith that is through Jesus has given the man this perfect health in the presence of you all." So, there's some key adjectives there, strong and perfect, right? Um, so the man isn't just weakly standing up with support, right? We, we find out that, um, people, people saw him walking and praising God.
He leaps.
He leaps to his feet, right? Now, he also has to hold on to them at some point too, but he leaps to his feet. Um, he's walking, he's praising God, so his legs are strong, so whatever atrophy had happened had been reversed. And then notice this, perfect health. Well, perfect health is again a reflection of the forgiveness of sins. So, G, so Peter, very early on, makes it explicitly clear that Jesus is God, because how are sins forgiven? By God, right? And so he preaches Christ, and so now, before we continue on, I want you to kind of ponder this question, um, because Acts is a really good book to think about this. If somebody asks you what you believe, or somebody asks you who is Jesus, somebody you know, how would you answer?
Peter says, "Is Christ the Son of the living God?"
Yeah, but what's that mean?
He's God.
What, what I'm saying is, is you probably know people in your life that aren't attached to a church, and they sit there and say, "What is he, believe, or who is Jesus?" And if you say, "Well, he's Christ, the Son of the living God," what's a Christ? What's the difference between a living God and a non-living God?
He takes care of...
Lives of death.
I know, but, but I'm, I'm just, I'm, 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 what, what I'm asking you is, is like, how you would answer that question? Think about that, and, and realize that, oh, how I answer that question might also lead to more questions and things like that. I mean, I'm not saying you have to have it perfect, but I think it's important to think about, you know, a book that is primarily about the history of the church spreading and the witnessing of the faith, well, how is it that we witness or faith today? While you guys ponder that, I'm gonna get a quick cup of coffee, so you can talk amongst yourselves, alright? And you can sit there and say, "Hey, you know, um, how would we talk with, with Mary if she asked us what it is we believe?" Right?
Did you give us your response when you...
Okay. Did you guys plan to wear matching shirts by the way?
Yeah, we called each other this morning.
Okay, alright, I just noticed that, so...
We bought them because...
Well, you know, great minds think...
Did you hear what you have forcefully said there?
No.
But she's going, "I can get some rest." Hey, you probably enjoyed that.
Alright, y'all have some time to think through that? Don't worry, we'll have, this will be a recurring theme in the class, so, so, yeah, go ahead.
Well, one, one conversation started is, what, who do you think Jesus is, and then you start responding, and the other one is, Jesus said that, who do you think I am?
Yeah.
And so, that would be one option.
Yeah, okay.
Is, is it in, uh, in Genesis that you have the creation, it shows all three, the Father, Son, and the Holy Spirit are all present in creation, Elohim?
Yeah. John, John one makes that very explicit, right?
But he always has been, Jesus always has been, he always will be.
Yep.
He is God, how can you can't separate him?
Karen?
I think if someone's asking you that question that doesn't have a background, they're not looking for a textbook answer, they're looking for something that they can feel, that you, you feel, not, not a, some book answer, they're just looking for your personal feeling.
Yes, so, I do get asked this question, um, especially when people find out that I'm a pastor. Um, I, I do get asked this question. If, if it's, um, somebody I don't know very well, I'll usually ask, "Well, why, why do you ask?" Right? Um, you know, because usually, if they're asking me, and they're a stranger, and all they really know is that I'm a pastor, there's usually something going on in their life. It's like, "Okay, let's, let's talk about that as well, alright?" For people that I, that I do know, that I have a relationship with, and ask me, you know, what it is that I believe, or, or who do I say, you know, who, who is Jesus? Um, I give, I like to give a positive statement of the faith. What I mean by that is that I don't tell them what I don't believe. The world's full of that, but I believe that we were created by God. I believe that the world, um, is bad, is wrong, is broken, I would call this sin. I believe that death isn't right. I believe that God so loved the world that Jesus came and died, um, to give what is known as forgiveness. And that in that forgiveness, that I have healing, that I have hope, I even have eternal life or life everlasting, which, which doesn't just mean floating up in heaven, but I believe that Jesus will come again, and that, um, I will be in a body again on the earth to live with God forever. Very short, very simple. I'm kind of use the framework of the apostles' creed. Right? There's God, there's sin, there's Jesus, there's eternity. And, and so, I'll go from that. And again, even when it is people that I have known for a long time, usually the reason that they're asking me this is because there's something going on in their life. Okay? And so just, I would also say, I have extra practice at this, because not only am I a pastor, but the evangelism executive, going and teaching, witnessing workshops and things like that, this is a question that I have pondered quite a bit in my life, and, and trying to work on an answer. There's no single universal answer. And I want, I want to be clear on that, there's no single universal answer. Because I also get asked this question by Jehovah's Witness, and I also get asked this question by Mormons. And when I know that Jehovah's Witness, I want to know the Mormon, I will tailor my answer for that context, right? Because everything I just said would be agreed to by Jehovah's Witness. Because everything I just said would be agreed to by Jehovah's Witness and would be agreed to by a Mormon. Right? Um, and they would sit there and mistake when they believe that we believe the same thing, but we have differences of truth and falsity over who is Jesus.
And I, and I think, I think that's the way to do it, is you have to start out with some context. I mean, you couldn't say, "Oh, Jesus is the Son of God that died for our sins," and then they're going, "What's a sin?" You know, if you start out explaining creation, fall, results of the fall, or death, you know, eternal death. And then, then you can move on to Jesus, is that Christ, the Son of the living God, who died for my sins, took all the consequences of my sins, so that I could live eternally in Him.
But, but you have to realize, like, the world is familiar with the term sinner.
Yeah.
Uh, from both the negative context of hellfire and brimstone preaching, things like that, and then also just popular media, there's a show called Sinners, and things like that. The world is not familiar with the term sin. Uh, usually not familiar with the term Christ or Messiah. Forgiveness means something different, right? It means I'm sorry. Right? Um, the term God is familiar, but God is defined in all sorts of different ways. So much so that, um, on our currency, it says, "In God we trust." I don't know if you guys know this, but, um, well, the United States was sued by an atheist, I think in the nineteen twenties. Um, and it went to the Supreme Court to remove "in God we trust" off our currency. And the Supreme Court ruled that God is not defined, so therefore is not endorsing a religion, and so it can stay on the currency. So, even our United States government has a definition of the term God. Right? Um, so... So it's good to think through these questions, because when we come to church, so we read our Bible, things like that, we have a whole vocabulary that the rest of the world builds on. Technical term for that is jargon. Right, you see that in the business world, there's certain jargons for industries and things like that. Right? Um, Christianity has a jargon that we talk about, because we have set definitions for these things, but the world doesn't use the same set definitions. So how do I talk about the gospel? And you will notice that I completely skipped morality, I completely skipped moral living. Because those flow out of belief in God. Those don't, those don't, um, because those flow out of belief in God. Those don't, those don't, um... What's a good representation of Christianity in media? I can think of Ned Flanders off The Simpsons. Of all shows. And there's actually, I believe, one of the Simpson writers, used to be LCMS or is LCMS, because you'll actually pick up that a lot of Christianity portrayed in The Simpsons actually pretty much aligns with the LCMS. Truth, truth. But think of a positive portrayal of Christianity, especially concerned of Christianity, in the media.
Well, what you're asking for is...
What?
It's what you call your elevator.
Paul Ingalls in Little House on the Prairie.
But how many decades ago was that?
We don't talk about that.
Or, or the fact...
Yeah? Okay.
In real life.
Or the fact that Michael Landon was Jewish.
Jewish.
Playing Christian, portraying Christian values as beneficial to the...
So, again, so the exposure that most non-Christians have to Christianity, that they're going to think of as very legalistic Christianity, or a very progressive Christianity, which is no different than what they believe already. Um... I have watched exactly one episode of Sex in the City, not even the whole thing, right? Because we didn't have HBO and I don't care for the show.
It's so bad you couldn't tolerate it, you have to turn it off?
Well, I left the room after this, so I haven't even seen the full episode.
I'm gonna say bad, that'd be inappropriate, I meant, like, unbearable.
I don't think it's a good show, yeah, I think it's bad writing in a lot of different ways, but anyway. Um, one of the characters in the episode was trying to get their baby baptized, or something like that, in the Catholic Church. And so, the show portrays the meeting with the priest, of course, they're not ever in the priest's office, they always meet in the middle of the whole sanctuary, which is just like, never happens in real life, you know, people have offices that they come and have these very personal conversations with, in a way. Um, and the, the, the character says, you know, "I don't want God mentioned, I don't want Jesus mentioned," you know? And, and then it narrates that the priest was more than accommodating for this because there wasn't a lot of baptisms happening. And I thought, "I don't know a single Roman Catholic priest that would not be removed by the bishop, because that's not a valid baptism in the Roman Catholic Church." Or in any Christian church. Um, and I thought, "Who was the writer of this episode?"
They didn't go to church, they didn't know.
And the people that are writing about Christians by and large, aren't Christians.
But they're writing for an audience.
And they're reinforcing these caricatures. So, I say all this to sit there and say, to think through our answers and to realize, like, okay, are there parts of my answer that are going to lead to questions? Yes. Is that question due to the words I use, or the conclusions that the answer gives? Right? What's a sinner? What's a Christ? What's a living God as opposed to a dead God? Right? Things like that, as opposed to, okay, you think, you think that the world's broken, right? And, and so trying to use terms and dialect of where the people are at.
I have something that I, uh, that sprung to mind when, when you first asked that, uh, is, is something that would lead to a lot of other questions from the listener. But Job's answer, "I know that my redeemer lives, and at last he will stand on the earth."
Yep. Yep.
Redeemed from what?
Yep.
Lots of questions to answer that you can talk about.
Yeah, and that's the thing, redeemed from what? You know, what's a redeemer, redeemed from what? You know, things like that. This used to be called the elevator pitch, right? You're in the elevator, how long are you in an elevator? You're in an elevator for less than a minute, a lot of times, or a couple minutes, so how can you give a witness, um, to your faith that would fit in that time span? Again, you have to put it in the language of the hero as well. So, we all speak English, but some of us speak different English. Right? Um, there's, there was something going around on social media, it was like, if you could know any five languages, just instantly off the top of your head. And people are putting like, all sorts of stuff on there, and I was like, "I just put English on there, you know, five different times," because... There's a, there's a joke in there from a baseball player, I won't say it, but...
I was just so long time, many witnesses know that, like, the unregenerated, they have, you know, symbols, stupid.
Yeah?
Because they, they don't know the terminology and words as, uh, Christians that have been in the faith for a while.
Yeah.
So...
They don't. They don't. Um, that's a vocabulary that you learn as you become Christian. So, okay, um, verse seventeen, "And now, brothers, I know that you acted in ignorance, as did also your rulers." Now, notice this, he just laid the entire weight of the law upon them. You killed him, we are witnesses to his resurrection, um, this man's been healed through this Jesus, um, he's staying healed through faith in Him. Or the faith is sustaining this man, um, but you did all that in ignorance. You didn't know. Right? Um, "But what God foretold by the mouth of all the prophets, that his Christ would suffer, and he thus fulfilled." So you did it in ignorance, but it was foretold. Right, if you go back and you read the prophets, this is what you find. And this is why, so when, when Judaism and Christianity solidify over their view of the person and work of Jesus Christ, this is why in Judaism, it reinterprets the suffering servant, Isaiah fifty-three, as being about the nation of Israel and not the Messiah. We read Isaiah fifty-three, we read, read it in Lent, typically it's read in, um, Holy Week, Monday, Thursday, Good Friday. Right? Who's it about? Who's the suffering servant? Sunday School answer, guys. Jesus, right? It's about Jesus, right? But if you reject Jesus, then who's it about? Oh, we have to answer that question, right? To answer that question. So, you guys did it in ignorance, but it was prophesied. Right? This, this, in other words, we're not telling you anything you don't already know, you just didn't know. And the question that I get asked sometimes is, is what do you mean by, "We're not telling you anything you didn't know, but you didn't know"? Well, it happens all the time. Um, a, a parallel here. What, how many of you feel comfortable teaching your kids the faith? A few, all right? A few, all right? But if you had to lead catechism class? You went through the class?
There's even questions that, like, that's a pastor question for my kids, I'm like, uh...
Right?
I mean, you may have read the Word, but you may not have understood.
What, what I'm...
My, my class was a lot different than Doug's.
What, what I'm, what I'm saying though is, you guys know eighty percent of the material. You actually do. And, and if, and if, and if we sat there and said, "Hey, I need you to teach the Sixth Commandment," or "I need you to teach," well, you guys don't want to do that one, never mind. "I need you to teach the Third Commandment," right? You could actually probably come in and teach the Third Commandment, because again, you have the book, you've been taught it yourself, you live it, right? You know it, but you don't know it at the same time. Part of what I tell parents, and one of the things that I try to help parents when it comes to confirmation is, is you have this mental block in your mind that I could do so much, but if I get it in a different context, I can't do the exact same thing that I was doing already? Yes, you can, you're just in a different context. Right? Um, when you hit the questions that are like, "Oh, that's a pastor question." Hey, that's why I'm there, send them to me, okay? Um, or if I'm not here, you know, send them to Pastor David, uh, we can answer the question, but, um, so there's a lot of things in life that we know, but we don't know. So this is, this is kind of that example here. Um, "Repent therefore, and turn again, that your sins may be blotted out, that times of refreshing may come from this presence of the Lord, and that he may send the Christ appointed for you, Jesus, whom heaven must receive until the time for restoring all things about which God spoke by the mouth of his holy prophets long ago." Okay. Anybody know what the word repentance means?
To turn about.
Turn.
Turn to go the other way.
To turn, right? It's to turn.
Change direction.
Right? Now, um, and, and there's a Greek word that we translate as repentance, and there's a Greek word which we translate as turnaround. Why would Peter say both? This is a common thing in, um, uh, Semitic languages, where you restate what you just said, using a different word or in a different way. You see this all the time in the Psalms. Right? So, he tells them to repent, and he tells them to turn away. Basically, he's telling them the same thing, he's just repeating it. Okay? Repent therefore, turn again, right? Repent of what? Turn again to what?
God.
To God. And it's specifically not just God, but Jesus Christ. The Jesus Christ. Right? That your sins may be blotted out. Um, so, back in the day, believe this or not, they did not have word processors on their computers, they didn't have Microsoft Word or anything else like that. It wasn't just these blinking pla- pixels of light, right?
So you're saying it was a better life?
I mean, forty-seven percent infant mortality rate, take, take your pick, okay? They didn't have typewriters, all right? They would write with, um, ink, quill. Um, and if you made a mistake, well, they didn't have a delete button. You, you had... They didn't have an eraser, right? They didn't have pencil, they didn't have lead, they were using paper. You would have to put a powder on or, or a rag to soak up the ink before it could really penetrate. They were usually writing on velium, which is deer skin or lamb skin, or on, um, parchment paper. They blotted it out.
Wow.
Which is a removal of ink from the writing surface. And so, what he says is, repent, that your sins may be removed from you. This is what blotted out means. Right? Removed from you. Um, "That times of refreshing may come from the presence of the Lord, and that he may send the Christ appointed for you, Jesus." So, um, so have your sins forgiven, you'll be renewed, that he may send the Christ, well, who's the Christ? Christ is Greek word for Messiah, so the Anointed One. Who is this Anointed One? Again, it is Jesus. So, Christ is title, his name isn't Jesus Christ, his name is Jesus, his title is "The Christ," by the way. His name is, uh, Jesus bar Joseph, or Jesus then Joseph, depending which language you're saying, Jesus, son of Joseph, because his earthly father was Joseph. They didn't have last names back then. Or was it? Okay. Uh, "Whom heaven must receive until the time for restoring all things about which God spoke by the mouth of his holy prophets long ago." So, what does it mean, um... So, so the times of refreshing isn't just a, a restoration, but it is, especially in this context, so, so, just to kind of break this all down, because this is a long sentence. So, "whom heaven must receive," what's that mean? Well, he's, where is Jesus at this point when Peter is preaching this? Same place he is now, he's up in heaven, he is ascended, he's awaiting to come again. Right? Um, so, they would sit there and say, "Well, where's Jesus? He rose from the dead." He's up there, all right? Peter's answering the question before the question is asked. Um, but this, this refreshing, especially in this context of, um, "until the time for restoring all things about which God spoke," well, what did the prophets warn about that would happen before the day of the Lord? Because the day of the Lord is the day that Christ returns in the Old Testament, that great and terrible day. It's tribulation.
War and run of wars, all of that, all of that. And, and many people that say they are the Christ, that aren't.
Yeah, so we live in the great tribulation now, right? Um, it's not a seven-year period, I love our dispensationalist brothers and sisters, it's not a seven-year period.
Haven't we been there since he went to heaven?
We've been there? Yeah, so, so, um, it's either the resurrection, it's either his death is resurrection or his ascension, of which you set off the time of the start of the tribulation. Um, historically, the various people in the church have picked that, that point. Some people picked his birth, but they're a very, very small minority. So, so anyway, um, this, this refreshing is, is basically, the context here is the sustaining through the time of persecution. Now, why would Peter start talking about persecution in Acts, chapter three? Luke's a really good writer, so is the Holy Spirit, guess what's about to happen?
Because the chapter four, you get really mad at him.
Right?
They're already in the way, they're walking their eyes.
They are.
Yeah.
They're on the way. So, um, repent, believe in Jesus, so that he may be restored, refreshed, sustained, in the time of persecution, until Christ shall return. That's, that's what that long sentence breaks down into, this is the perfect place to stop, because we got like, two minutes. So, any questions so far? One of these days, we'll finish chapter three, maybe next Sunday.
Just a quick question, do the Jews talk about Peter very much, people in the Jewish faith, do they talk about that very much?
No.
Because this is such a chapter of pointing everything to Jesus and Messiah.
No. No. So, modern day Judaism, of course, rejects... So, modern-day Judaism, of course, rejects Jesus as the Christ or as the Messiah, and so they reject, um, almost the entire New Testament. Some Jews, particular more liberal Jews, so, um, I believe that's the Reform tradition in Judaism, Reform Judaism, will talk about him as potentially being a very good moral teacher. Um, some might even go so far as to say he was a prophet, but he was misunderstood, or things were twisted. But they're not going to, they're not gonna talk about Peter, they're not gonna talk about Paul, um, they're not gonna talk about John, because all the apostles are gonna be pointing to Christ.